Everyone to the committee of the hall for August 26, 2020. So the first thing is called to the order. Mike?
The roll call, ever out of pride?
Yes. Yeah.
Carter?
Yeah.
Gerhard?
Here.
Rosie? Rosie?
Here.
Valdenado?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Schrader?
Okay, so I can...
Schroeder? She's here.
Okay.
Strassman?
She's here.
And Udell?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, next in our agenda is the place of allegiance. So please stand up. A place of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation and the God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, I need a motion to approve the minute for the July 22 meeting.
So move.
Okay. Any question, discussion?
We second that. Rosie? Okay, thanks.
Any question, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, the motion carried. Next, we have in the agenda, public appearance for non-agenda item. Do we have anyone in the chamber for that?
No one in the chamber for that.
Okay, so next we move to the first item of discussion for tonight is the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative update. So and then we have Wade Thompson and some guests. So Wade, can you take it?
Ben, yeah, we do have some guests. So the first thing I want to do is share my screen and then we will introduce our guests. All right, do people see a PDF PowerPoint?
Yes, we do, Wade.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Let me just get it set up here. Okay, yeah, so we're here tonight to talk Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative. I'll be using the acronym HNI throughout. And again, the goal is to give the council an update in terms of where we stand with the HNI as of August 2020. So a few things I want to cover, and again, we do have some guest speakers. I think probably the best approach, I will introduce them as it's their turn to speak. But we have about five guest speakers tonight. We also have Scott Endel from our Parks Department. So I'm going to kick it off. I'm going to start by talking HNI big picture. And then we'll talk about what I call the HNI three Ps of places, people, and programs. When we talk places, we'll talk about the hub in the north Fish Hatch Road area. When we talk people, we'll talk about the neighborhood navigators. And when we talk programs, we'll talk about our grant program generally and the Pittsburgh fund specifically. And we'll also have some testimonials from some organizations that have received our grant program funding over the past couple of years. So again, a lot of this will be review for all those that have been around for a while. But I know we have some new elders and I'm just going to briefly give you an overview of what the HNI is. And then we'll again talk more specifically about the status of where we're at with it. So in terms of healthy neighborhoods, when we talk about them from a planning perspective, we really think about three things. Equity and access to opportunities in our neighborhoods. Having diversity in our neighborhoods and not just diversity doesn't just mean large segments of minorities. It means diversity in land use, housing stock, and the people that live in those neighborhoods. And I think the next agenda item that you'll hear more about housing and how that fits into our HNI big picture. And then finally, when we talk healthy neighborhoods, we're talking about components in our neighborhoods that are integrated, stable, and sustainable. So it's education, employment, housing, recreation, public safety, and physical environment, all working together to again create that idea of a healthy neighborhood. In terms of why healthy neighborhoods are important, you know, a few reasons. I think generally speaking, the converse unhealthy neighborhoods generally require a lot of resources, a lot of time and money. And they may create perceptions that impede future growth opportunities in our city generally and our neighborhood specifically. Furthermore, healthy neighborhoods provide a lot of benefits. There's a graphic there about the quadruple bottom line. So we're talking social returns, economic returns, and environmental returns, not just to the residents in those neighborhoods, but to our broader city and the broader region. And I think more kind of philosophically, healthy neighborhoods build what we call community. So it's really that idea of not just a city and buildings, but really a community that has shared interests resulting from common goals. So I think kind of where we're at now is I think over the past couple of years, I think Pittsburgh as a city has really come to recognize and understand that we have a role to play in planning, building, and maintaining healthy neighborhoods within our borders. So that led to again what's called our HNI, our Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative. And really that's about a strategic, interdepartmental, comprehensive, and integrated approach to address specific issues in three specific north Pittsburgh neighborhoods. Now, I do want to kind of point out, we've come a long way with obviously with council support, with staff support. We started with a two-page memo back in November of 2016. And in less than three years, you know, we developed a 40-page strategic plan with 16 action items. And we're going to talk about some of those action items in further detail tonight. So again, really where the rubber hits the road here with our initiative, it's about three of our northern neighborhoods. We term them priority neighborhoods. Going west to east, we've got our Verona Road West neighborhood, just west of Verona Road. Moving across the Verona Road corridor, we've got our Belmar Renaissance on the Park neighborhood. And then moving further east, we've got our north Fish Hatch Road neighborhood as well. And again, when we talk about this initiative and what it's about, it's not just about city staff. It's not just about our residents. It's not just about our decision makers, our committees and councils. It's about everybody working together to really bring those neighborhoods, you know, up to where they need to be in terms of being a healthy neighborhood. And I do want to point out as a planner, you know, these neighborhoods don't just happen. These neighborhoods happen and the status of them happens because of the way we plan or don't plan and the way we invest or don't invest. So I really want to point out that healthy neighborhoods require good planning and continued investment. And my goal as a planner is let's, I obviously won't be here in 40 years, but let's not be having the same conversations in 40 years about these neighborhoods and about additional neighborhoods in our city. Let's really think about how we again plan, build, and maintain those healthy neighborhoods. So with that kind of big picture in mind, I do want to move more specifically into what I'll call the first P. And again, that's this idea of really understanding the importance of places in our priority neighborhoods. So one project we've been recently undertaking is what's called our north Fish Hatch Road Hub. And I think the council is generally familiar with that concept. Obviously, tonight, we'd like to talk in more detail about that. But first off, I just want to talk about, you know, kind of set the stage for this discussion on the hub. We'll talk project goals. And really, the goal here was to create a multifaceted hub plan. Then I'll just briefly provide a planned process and timeline. We'll talk about how we engage the public and decision makers, policymakers around developing the hub plan. We'll talk about what the hub plan is and isn't. And then we'll talk about the plan itself. So first off, I just want to send out some thank yous. I'm not going to list everybody here, but I guess the point being is there's been a lot of heads in this plan for a lot of years. And this really has been a really good team effort. And I just do want to point out, I've been a planner for 12, 13 years. And this is one of the coolest projects I've been lucky enough to be a part of. I think it's really a groundbreaking project and we're getting a lot of interest, region and statewide, from other planners, you know, asking how we're doing this. You know, ways that they can learn from this process. But again, as it relates to more specifically project goals, again, we want to create a multifaceted hub plan that meets the social and recreational needs of that neighborhood, enhancing their quality of life and their access to opportunities. We also want to serve as a catalyst to stabilize that corridor, that neighborhood, again, spurring new investment and enhancement of property values. So those are, I think, the two relevant goals for tonight. Another piece of the hub that we're not going to talk about tonight is the golf course improvements. So the third project goal would be to ensure the long-term financial sustainability of that golf course in the neighborhood. So again, more specifically, as it relates to those first two project goals, I think as planners, as a staff and our consultants thought about this hub plan, we really wanted to create a space that's on quote-unquote seven days a week year round. And obviously, we'd have some variable hours in as it relates to seasons. But I think we really want to create a space that's on all the time and that provides something for everyone, you know, not just for kids or for people in the neighborhood, but something for the city as a whole and for everyone that lives in our city. So whether it's kids, whether it's parents, whether it's young professionals, seniors, we want to create a place for everyone. So that can lead to the second point. Again, we want to create a space that meets the current needs of the neighborhood, but also the future needs of the neighborhood and the current and future needs of the broader community as well. And then a cherry on top of that is if we can create a space that attracts visitors to our city, you know, even better. So I'm not going to get too far into this, but essentially this provides kind of an overview of process and timeline for the hub plan. And again, we've been at this about a year. Lot of hard work, lot of thought went into this. We engaged with the neighborhood, we engaged with our stakeholders, we engaged with landowners, we engaged with, you know, basically everyone we thought would have an interest in this project. Gathered lots of feedback, came up with a planned concept, and then are essentially presenting that concept to you tonight. In terms of next steps, we're basically 99% done with the plan. We want to get some final council feedback and then we'll make a few final tweaks and then have that final deliverable. I know there has been some budget discussions about implementation of the hub. So certainly if that pans out, staff will be ready to roll with implementation later this year or early next. So just quickly, what the plan is and isn't. At this point, again, it's a concept. It isn't a detailed architectural blueprint or floor plan. Again, if we do get the go-ahead in the budget to implement the hub, then we'll go to that part two planning and really come up with a specific blueprint and floor plan for how the hub will look. At this point, again, it's kind of a malleable plan. We're certainly still open to feedback and criticisms to improve, you know, the final hub plan. And again, as I mentioned, it's 99% complete. We're very close to a final product. So with that, I'm pretty much ready to turn it over to our consultants who've been a great help over the past year. Rob Stein from Ayers and Associates and Mike Zolke from Edgbert Anderson Architects. So what Mike and Rob are going to talk about is those first two pieces of the hub plan in more detail. So again, we have three pieces to the hub plan. We've got our enhanced park space on the north side of Traceway Drive. We've got a neighborhood center type facility on the south side of Traceway Drive. And then again, we've got those golf course improvements. So again, Rob and Mike will talk in more detail about slides one and two. And with that, I will turn it over to, I believe, Rob. And Rob, I don't know, are you able to control this screen here? Or do you?
I just requested control.
I just approved it.
Okay.
And I just basically am advancing the slides. It's a PDF, so there's the green arrows. Yep, exactly. Oh, I guess maybe one more before I turn it over to you, Rob, sorry. What Rob and Mike will talk about again is a real detailed overview of the hub plan. And I do want to point out that the hub plan, how it was composed, was essentially derived from neighborhood feedback. So everything you see here is the feedback we got from the neighborhood and that helped us craft that hub plan. And again, I think what we're talking about here is desired outdoor amenities, desired indoor amenities, and then desired services. And again, Rob and Mike will talk a little bit more about how the hub plan reflects some of the things we heard in the engagement process.
Okay. Just a quick thank you for allowing us to talk on behalf of this project. It's been a really pleasure to be a part of. And in the interest of time, I'll keep things moving. But generally, what Mike and I are going to do is give you a quick tour of the site, how it came to be, what it all encompasses, and how we kind of break things up as we look at it at a phased approach. So what you see here is the overall kind of adopted plan. Some of the major elements are basically on the north side of Traceway and the south side. It kind of defines two major zones of activity and potential improvement. With community building on the north side, more active recreational opportunities, some flexible space, parking amenities. And on the south side, more of a community center focused building with some overflow space. And as Wade touched on, there's that adjacency to the golf course, which could have implications in the future as well. So as I touched on, when we look at this, breaking this up to north and south as phase one and two, it makes a lot of sense as far as constructability, usability. But that being said, there's very much a connection and a symbiotic relationship between how this would could ultimately function upon complete multiple-phase completion. Okay. This kind of focuses on that first phase development. And as we go left to right, we would look at an improved parking facility to service these areas. A multi-use covered structure area, which we'll get into detail. And we'll have graphics to work with this plan view to kind of help illustrate. And it's been a good tool to communicate with community as well. And then we have a community building here, number two. Kind of plaza overflow space here, kind of the spine of the design. Playground area, some bike improvements, and some kind of flexible gameplay space here. And we'll go into the detail, but I just wanted to touch on the plan view to get an idea of everything there.
Hey, Rob, could you go back real quick? Sorry, I just wanted to interject. Better seen in the plan view, but just we'll look a little bit more at number two, which is the, we'll call it the community shelter building. And I just want to kind of relate in plan view, which you'll see in some visual 3D type things. But the building kind of lays out, it's about a 2,500 square foot building with a covered porch towards the back. And you'll see in the plan that it's really loaded on the left side of the building. There's a bar, which is really kind of support services, which make up bathrooms, a warming kitchen, a mechanical room, and office. And then to the right side of the building, it's a kind of an open space, more of an event space. So this building's really, and we'll get into a little bit, really meant to be kind of an inside-outside type of building, kind of a community shelter. Okay. Next slide, please. So going along those lines, so this is a view, obviously looking back towards this community shelter building. You can see on the left side, it's a covered structure that we have there. And the intent there is really to be something light, something airy, a lot of space. So it has covered area to it, but it's kind of open to the space itself. The building itself essentially located, and the idea really behind this was to be like some community shelter buildings are set in more of a park setting. This is more of kind of an urban type of setting we feel with that neighborhood. So what we want to do is really push that building closer to the street, get some presence there with our landscape integrating to there, really creates kind of that welcoming entry to it. And then creating a one and a half story not only allows some extra light in there, but kind of creates the scale to go along with that covered structure. Excellent. So another shot at this entry, but what's good to focus here is on the left side, I talked about that kind of bar that we had there. And that bar is really meant to serve both the building and this is where it can serve the outside. So if there's events in that corridors that created through there, if there's events underneath the corridor or the covered structure, that warming kitchen or concession stands or what have you can be opened up to serve both outside and inside along with the bathrooms as well. Material-wise, we are looking at some very durable materials, brick and stone mixed in with potentially siding or metal panel. But creating durable products, durable materials that, you know, when you have a lot of people around, that's going to take a little bit of a beating over time. So we want to really look at some solid materials for this building and the community building. This is a little bird's eye view of that same building. And what's interesting here is in the plan, I failed to mention there, but there was a kink in the building that moved backwards. And it's kind of done twofold. One of the reasons was it helps for sightlines when you're traveling down Traceway, but it also kind of opens up back over to the park, which Rob and the playground area will get into. But you can see that direct connection to this long kind of pathway that we have, that you see in the master plan. This pathway really starts to tie between the north side of Traceway and the south side of Traceway. And right now, you know, we're looking at making that known kind of in the, into the ground or into the street as kind of that crossway. So when you're driving, you see this coming up that it's more of an active zone. You also start to see the backside of this covered patio, which, next slide, please. Which you can see a little bit better here. So this patio is another extension again to that inside-outside building. So there's entrances on the front of the building. There's also entries on the backside of the building, creating this covered patio, which again starts to reach out and relay to both covered structure and the playground areas as well. Another interesting point of this one to note is that this is a view looking south, self-back to the other side of Traceway. And you can see how it relates to the community structure on the other side. Community structure is a two-story building, but they start to play off one another and kind of create that language in kind of jumping Traceway Street.
Okay, I'll pick up here. And what Mike was kind of touching on is that, you know, if you're in this space, you're in this covered area, you have nice sightlines out to Traceway. So if you're driving by, you can see glowing people underneath this structure. And then what this facility also serves is, you know, there's going to be a playground in this space. And, you know, as parents and users, it will, for daily use, it serves as some shade and relief while also maintaining a lot of the good sightlines into those areas. Now, this is looking south. Our glowing people are right underneath that shelter there. But this gives a good kind of overview of the site. And it kind of illustrates the flexibility of a lot of these spaces around the building. It serves the playground, it serves these overflow play areas. It serves, you know, whatever this bike facility becomes. Right now, we show it as some sort of pump track, you know, and that will get developed further along in the planning process. But you start to see some of these connections. And we'll get into another slide here, but what also happens here is there's this parking facility is off to the right over here. And there's kind of two connections that serve the whole site that run kind of parallel to Traceway. And one is on the street side and one is on the back of this covered structure area. So even though parking's over here and kind of not exactly adjacent to some of these uses, there's a strong connection. And you just don't have that kind of an eyesore of all these nice amenities with a parking lot in front of them. So this is looking at that new parking lot area on the west side of the area. And you can start to see kind of the strong connections between the east and the west side of the site as you go through. And this gives you an idea of kind of the airiness of how that would feel. And as we move forward, you'll get even a stronger idea of what that might look like. So this is traveling east on Traceway to give you kind of a more realistic level view as you would be driving. And as we keep stating, we tried to keep this as open and airy so that it's not a heavy, dark place, but, you know, a covered usable space that is really inviting for a multitude of uses, basketball courts, sports, farmers markets, what have you. And into... Going back, there was a comment about the beds in front of the building. At this point, the landscaping is basically conceptual at this point. But I would envision this being a very naturalized landscape, using a lot of native and adaptive species, maybe some specimen, fruiting trees, things like that. But I don't know, there's not a lot of, we don't want to have too much maintenance, but kind of taking advantage of some of these more visible areas to do some enhanced landscaping as well. Okay. Oops. Yep, I... All right, and this slide here is kind of an overview looking to the north, just to kind of emphasize this pedestrian spine that connects and kind of unifies this north and south side. And you can kind of see how this change in material and pattern, maybe tabletop, as you're driving through, really tells the drivers or the bikers that you've entered a special space, a different space to kind of command attention, draw attention, because we envision more activity, bikes, pedestrians in this area.
And I think I'll take over now. This is Scott. And certainly, you know, Mike and Rob have given a good explanation of the physical aspects of both the north and south side. But, you know, as Wade has spoken and as we have spoke, that we really feel that a critical component of this, the success of both north and south side is the management of these areas. We feel that it's critical that we do have a presence there, just so it can, you know, be a very active spot. So, you know, the bullets that I'm going to kind of talk about are the management, potential revenue, and the funding. Management, we really see it as a couple of different groups being involved. Certainly Wade will introduce the navigators would be in this space. There could be park and recreational staff in this space. And certainly, you heard at the capital improvement plan, the testimonials, we're very confident that we're going to get a lot of nonprofit partners who are interested and willing to be participants in the management of both the north and the south side. One caveat that I, you know, as we begin to start to flush this out, the timing, if everything goes well with the, you know, the design, the bidding, the construction. I know we did include in the CIP $40,000 in the annual operating budget for 2021. You know, and I think it's important that we keep that as a placeholder. But if we are looking for dollars, I could see that potentially we wouldn't begin construction until maybe the third, you know, the third or the beginning of the fourth quarter of 2021 to get it all enclosed, to do some finishes over the winter. And then we would be able to begin to operate it in 2021. Certainly, there may be some electrical expenses or those kinds of things in fiscal 2021 for the operating budget. So I, you know, I see if there is a need to reduce that operating budget for 2021, that, you know, potentially there could be some dollars that are taken from this phase one north side, from what I did, revenues. You know, again, I think with the food and drink potentially, there could be a vendor in there, which we could potentially receive some dollars. And certainly, I view this as rentable space, so we could see some revenues there. You know, and then the construction, you know, I know Wade has worked with trying to find funding sources. And it's been my experience too, that typically, I know with lock-on, the, you know, the funding cycle is you apply May 1 and then you receive funding potentially July. And I really do see that this project being a fundable project, that the city would, you know, pay for everything upfront. But then through these grant programs, we would, you know, we could certainly see and realize some grant dollars coming back to, you know, to relieve that commitment that the city does provide. Uh and, you know, and again, with I I've been asked to speak on on slide thirty-five, which we'll get to. And and it's really, you know, generally the same type of idea and concept on the south side uh with, you know, again, our nonprofit partners uh and 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 I kind of relate this to our recreational uh program management where we as the rec department, we, you know, we coordinate the the contractors who provide the services. They provide the services. We just manage them, you know, provide that that consistent uh uh base for them. Um but again, I I see this as a a win-win where the city can have those services provided. We certainly would provide the space. Uh but I really would rely on the non, you know, the nonprofit partners to be the management uh components of of both of these facilities potentially.
Hey, uh Scott, Mike and Rob, we've got about five minutes left to wrap up pub stuff, just a time check.
Okay.
And that I I guess that would that would conclude my, you know, my my, you know, discussion on the management of both phase one, which is the north side and phase two, which would be the south side. They're kind of the same same points.
All right, we'll um speed this up a little bit. So we'll just take a quick look at um the uh community building on the south side. So this is a approximately twenty-three thousand square foot uh two-story building. The interior is really pretty generic at this point. Um it's really kind of designed as a commercial building to be flexible and allow for leasable spaces that way. Just to note, you know, we'd have a a kind of a corner piece, a lobby, entry lobby over there really um kind of attached to that connection between the two streets. And then we'd have a connection on the west side um out to that spine. But on the on the east side, we wouldn't forget about that. It's not uh that would be really kind of creating a patio space or creating green space to the east side to connect um to the senior living building, kind of just going up on the east side as well. So this is a view looking um east at the building and you can see that um the building's kind of getting the point across that they're talking to one another and they relate to one another, but they bring over the same kind of architectural feels to them, but they have their own characteristics to it that um the low roof really pulls along that spine and it creates not only kind of that transitional space to inside, but also creates um good sun control on this side um as well when we're facing due east. The architecture is really kind of, again, going along that leasable space that it's able to be divided up uh for future use. Um a view looking at this corner piece, um again, popping it out, creating a little bit taller, creating kind of that beacon, that landmark when you're looking up and down Traceway as your main entrance. Uh one feature we did look at uh or thought about is on that second floor, that would be um, you know, targeted to as kind of a community room or a community space um for the community and would have fantastic views when up here, when you're up there, but really kind of again be that beacon on that corner of this building. Um again, a shot looking uh west along Traceway and uh you can see how the two buildings relate and kind of create that uh beacon as you're going down there, creating a space um, you know, kind of an urban space that we have there. And you'll see on the on the left side of the building, um those would be a secondary entrance. We talked about having a community center in there, but it'd be a secondary entrance again. So it it really starts to relate to the development that's towards the east and not just becoming a backside of the building, but becoming kind of holding that urban edge, so to speak, as we go down Traceway.
Okay, and this is just kind of a final overview and you can kind of get a good idea, um bird's eye view of of the components in their entirety. Um so again, thanks for listening to us and giving you a little tour through the site and uh we'll let Wade move on.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, guys. And Rob and Mike will be around at the end to to answer questions as well. Um Scott, in like a minute or so, did you want to add anything on on this slide or you did you cover?
No, I I I think I'm good, certainly unless there's there's questions and and it's again the, you know, the management, the revenue and and construction funding.
Yep, yep. And I think what I'll do now, just in the interest of time, I think we're gonna, we'll come back to the people component if if we have time, our our neighborhood navigators. But I really want to do get to our grant program um and the guest speakers. So I will just quickly provide a an overview of the grant program. And then we'll we'll let our speakers kind of talk about um how they've used some of our funds to to do really good things in the city. So again, now we're kind of moving into the programmatic piece of the H and I uh Talking Grant Program and Fitchburg Fund. So um essentially, we've had a grant program, an H and I grant program for about four years. The planning department has had it for the past two, so I I kind of oversee the grant program. Um in terms of the past two years, uh twenty nineteen, we distributed approximately fifty thousand dollars uh to six nonprofit orgs doing doing work in our priority neighborhoods. Um and the issues that were addressed run the spectrum of of needs in our neighborhoods, so everything from food insecurity uh to youth mentoring, to to leadership, workforce, uh and community engagement development for our our disadvantaged populations. Um so all told, in twenty nineteen, we served over three thousand uh city residents with those those fifty thousand dollars. Um in terms of what we did in twenty twenty, um we distributed sixty-eight thousand dollars. Um and if the council remembers, you act you guys are actually a part of the approval process this year. So I believe in April, um thi- this was approved. So basically sixty-eight thousand dollars was distributed to uh looks like eight eight groups. And again, if you just, I'm not going to read all these to you, but if you look at the list, um obviously these groups are covering the spectrum of of needs and 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 issues in our in our neighborhoods. So again, just quickly, I think the council has seen this before as well, but in terms of summarizing our twenty twenty awards, um really positive from a staff perspective, we're distributing the awards throughout all three neighborhoods. That's a really good thing. And again, so that kind of, that's the top top table there. The bottom table, again, really shows you the um the spectrum of issues that we're covering with our our grant funds, so everything from abuse support to youth and adult education, food insecurity, youth mentoring, uh senior support and workforce development. And again, this is a new program. This is new to the city and new to to our department and and to me as a as a professional. So it is a work in progress. Um we're making improvements, modifications every year. Um we did some some good twenty twenty improvements. I think the goal would be to have some twenty twenty-one improvements as well that we will discuss with our our grant committee. And then ultimately those will come before council and then we'll discuss those and hopefully council will um approve some of those um improvements for twenty twenty-one as well. And I guess just kind of summarizing things, you know, I think what I'm seeing as as grant administrator is certainly um a lot of interest in our grant program. And I think the folks that I'll talk next will speak to that. But generally speaking, our our demand for our our awards, our our funding is exceeding our supply. Um in the past two years, our supply has averaged about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Um generally speaking, as a city, we've allocated anywhere from fifty thousand dollars to sixty-five thousand dollars in those two years. So again, just the idea that demand is obviously um exceeding supply. And then I'm just going to quickly talk, probably just breeze through this, but this was a another piece of our grant program this year, a pilot partnership with United Way. Uh we called it the Fitchburg Fund. Uh the gist of it was United Way went out to our our businesses and tried to raise money on our behalf. Um and then that money would be pooled with some ex- some city money. And then um we would basically try to find a provider via competitive RFP process to address a specific issue, uh youth education. Um and then they would be funded through the the city allocation of fifteen thousand dollars and the money raised by by United Way. So we ran that program in in February and March of this year. Again, it was a business-focused campaign. Uh United Way raised three thousand dollars for the city. Um so staff's still working on that RFP that I mentioned, um but our hope is to get that out there sometime yet this year uh with those fun with those pooled funds that I talked about. And then we'll get applications for the RFP. Um our grant committee will review those applications, make a recommendation on a desired provider. Uh the council will approve that provider and then the provider will address that youth education issue and be funded through the the pooled money that I just mentioned. But I do want to point out, we did learn a lot this year. It was a pilot. Um I'm in discussions right now about trying this again next year with some some pretty big modifications to make it more successful. So I will bring that to our grant committee in in a month or so and then ultimately to the council. And and you will tell staff whether or not you want to try this partnership again again next year. With that, I will turn it over to our, what I'll call our grant program testimonials. We have three uh three folks with us tonight, Sandy from Big Brothers Big Sisters, uh Marsha from Badger Prairie Needs Network and Baltazar from Latino Academy of Workforce Development. And again, these folks have have um been recipients of our grant program the past uh past couple of years. So they're here to just kind of tell you what they've, all the good work that they've done with those funds. With that, I will, Sandy, are you are you there?
Yeah, I'm I'm here.
Great, so I will stop sharing my screen and let you share yours. Is that?
Sure, that works.
Okay, so you should be good to go.
Okay, uh let me just make sure I know what I'm doing. Uh, hold on. Share. Okay, can everybody see? I think it worked. All right. Um well, good evening. Um my name is Sandy Morales. I'm the CEO of Big Brothers Big Sisters of Dane County. Um and um if hopefully many of you know, we are the largest youth mentoring organization in Dane County. Um as an organization, uh we serve close to seven hundred youth. Um but uh uh Fitchburg, um you know, we we have a smaller targeted population. So our mission is to create and support one-to-one mentoring relationships that ignite the power and promise of youth. Um and uh and Wade, I'm assuming I still have five minutes. Is that correct or?
Yeah, if you could. Yep, that's about right. Yep.
All right, um so um we we are in our second year of um of our or or this is our second year receiving the grant. Um and when we applied for the grant originally in two thousand for two thousand nineteen, you know, we saw that um we we had about forty-one youth in the different priority neighborhoods that were identified in Fitchburg. Um and as of today, um we have about sixty-three youths in the priority neighborhoods. And those kids are served either through our community-based program, which is one-to-one mentoring that occurs out in the community. Um most people recognize this program. We have volunteer mentors and mentees that are that have outings out in the community, which um, you know, could look like a lot of things. It could be, you know, playing out in the park. Um it could be, well, you know, obviously this is all pre, a lot of this is pre-COVID, but um, you know, going to sporting events, um, you know, just, you know, spending time, doing activities, spending time together. Um and that's our community-based program. We have our school-based model um where we actually do mentoring at eleven sites. Um and for the kids that we're serving through the priority neighborhoods, we identify those those youth attending um either Cherokee Middle School, Wright Middle School or um we also do serve kids in those priority areas through the Boys and Girls Club TAF location, which ends up serving um kids from Leopold Elementary School. Um so I wanted to also kind of give you a sense of what that uh what's what's serving kids in those priority neighborhoods looks like. So here is a snapshot of um of what that looks like. So, you know, with it explains, um our current matches are the ones in blues and the ones that are waiting to be matched are in yellow. So we have about, I think, nineteen, about nineteen littles that are still on, you know, technically the waitlist. And they've actually been waiting for an average of about five hundred and seventy-three days. So um, you know, so that's, you know, somewhere around over over um uh what, over a year or so. Um and, you know, most of the kids, you know, you can obviously know, um most of the kids that we serve, eighty eighty-seven percent of the kids are youth of color. Um when we see high wait li- uh wait days or in terms of how long they've been waiting, it usually, that's usually what we see with boys. Um so there is definitely a need for more um male volunteers um because we are serving a larger uh populate or there are there are requests to be serving um boys more often in in our program. Um so um, you know, one of the things that we're that we're finding right now, um obviously our program is a little bit challenged with coronavirus and, which brings me to my next next slide. Um in terms of the benefits of our of our partnership, um I I know that many of our matches right now are are meeting virtually. That has been one of the changes for us. Um, you know, the benefits of having a mentor and mentee relationships is a lot of them that have already started, especially the ones that started last year are still continuing on. Um although it might look a little bit different, you know, they are either meeting virtually. Uh we do have some of our match relationships that are at that are meeting in person, but are meeting under um, you know, safety guidelines, social social distancing guidelines. Um so I think regardless of what's happening um with COVID nineteen, we are still seeing engagement between our our bigs and littles and um whether they they were through the community-based program or through the school-based program. Um I think in the future, we have a a really great opportunity to engage Fitchburg residents to volunteer in their own community. Um so many things, what we find is, you know, except for Fitchburg, you know, when we're serving, you know, the rest of the county like Madison, um it can be so hard to recruit volunteers because if you live in Madison, you could live on the east side and 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 it would be a lot harder to mentor someone that lives on the other side of town. But um I think Fitchburg really has an opportunity to call on to their own residents to volunteer um to serve to serve youth in their own neighborhood. Um and I think we also have an opportunity to see the change over time. Um, you know, I know that we're in our second year of of, you know, participating in this grant, but I think that we could definitely see change over time. Um one of the benefits to our partnership is that uh we are able to track that change. We have a youth outcome survey that we um administer to all our youth that participate in our program. And we're able to uh really me- measure the attitude that our youth have um towards um, you know, peer relationships, to towards academics, um to avoidance of risky behaviors, and we can attribute that a lot to mentoring. So um so I think, I know we were talking about the hub and I know there's all these great opportunities to further engage the community and youth. And I, you know, I can definitely see that as an advantage um with our partnership as a way to um uh not only continue leveraging those opportunities like the hub and and the teen center, but um, you know, through youth mentoring, I I think those locations would 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 be a great place to administer youth mentoring by bringing um different volunteers uh from Fitchburg together with youth at those spaces. So um I don't want to talk too much because I know other people have to go, but uh I just wanted to thank um uh, you know, the city for for the um, you know, for for selecting us for this grant. Um I will say that even though, you know, we're a, you know, we're an organization that's been around for a long time and that um, you know, we can definitely prove the effect of our programs. Um this is actually the first government grant that we've received in, I don't even know since when. So I do applaud you for actually, um, you know, taking that bold step and investing in our youth by um investing in youth mentoring programs. So that's all. Thank you.
All right, Marsha, are you there?
I am.
Okay, Marsha, so I will share my screen and you will tell me when to advance. Is that what we had talked about?
Right. Thank you for doing that.
Good.
Well, hello, everybody. Thanks for inviting Badger Prairie Needs Network to present tonight. Um I think I think we're known to most of you, but you do have a few new council members. So I'll just briefly go through who we are and what we do. And then I'll talk about recent events and the impact on our shared community in Dane County and Fitchburg in particular. So I am the executive director. Um you can go ahead, next one. Thank you. Our mission is dedicated to fighting poverty and ending. Thank you. Our mission is dedicated to fighting poverty and ending hunger locally, although recently it's been more regional, the impact that we've been having. And in a perfect world, what we envision is a strong, healthy community where nutritious food is readily available and where hunger at its very worst is just temporary and not a way of life. You can go forward, Wade. We are unique in that we are 100% volunteer. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Not a single person is paid of our 950 volunteers that make this organization hum. And we did some strategic planning in the fall and that's our leadership team, which has actually expanded almost double what it was at the time we did planning. We can go forward. We've grown a lot in our 34 years. Uh, in 1986, we started out in the closet of a church, a Salem United Church of Christ in, um, Verona. And then the Verona City Council gave us space in the old public library basement, which was not suitable for food assistance or even storing food. In 2015, we were successful in responding to an RFP with Dane County and we were given the old administration building at Badger Prairie, um, health facility. And that facility quadrupled our space and allowed us to create a lot of new programs to serve the community, including enlarging our food pantry, building a commercial kitchen there that could do education for nutrition. Um, we started a community meal that's free on weekends that became very popular prior to COVID. Um, and we, we launched in 2018, a program called Kitchen to Table, and that is a food recovery program um, that in its first year of operation successfully saved 50 tons of delicious edible food from the landfills and instead distributed it to the community. And in 2020, we are starting our next chapter. Um, we are doing construction on the facility right now. We're adding 1,000 square feet of additional cooler space that will assist us in taking, um, receipt of enormous quantities of federal food that's coming through the federal commodities program and serving as a hub here for local food pantries to stop and get cooler food from us rather than driving clear to the east side to the food banks. So, um, we can go forward. Prior to COVID, we ran the food pantry. We had a legal services program that is actually quite busy right now with evictions and with tenant resource issues. Um, that is staffed by volunteer attorneys, all with 30 years of experience that assist local families for free. We had our community meal that was breaking records and was bringing in 175 people in the hour that it was served every Saturday. And nutrition education had really started to take off with a partnership with UW Health and getting people healthier. And then food recovery, um, 100,000 pounds or 50 tons diverted from landfills in 2019. And we had other partnerships with M A T C and the Verona High School Transition Program. And we have a joining forces for family social worker on staff at BPNN as well. We can go forward. The food pantry, just a little bit about our growth. Since we, um, we started in 1986, serving mostly the Verona School District. In 2017, after we got to the new building and we had more capacity to serve more people, we expanded to include all of the zip code 53593. That was, um, six, all our parts of six school districts. Last year, we expanded to serve the Caesar Chavez Elementary School Neighborhood because we saw there was a gap in food assistance programs there. So that put us into seven school districts. And this year, during the worldwide pandemic, BPNN collaborated with four of the other large food pantries in Dane County to relax all of our, our boundaries and make sure that no household in Dane County was affected by food insecurity. So we took down the boundaries. We increased the number of times people could visit. Right now, anybody in Dane County that is food insecure can come to Badger Prairie Needs Network for assistance. We can go forward. The new reality for us was, um, March 13th, we closed down the store. And on March 18th, we reopened doing nothing but drive-up service. It was an incredible logistical, um, success story. I think you can see our very first day in that photo. The line went down to, um, the, to Verona Road where it, uh, the end of the Belt Line where you exit Verona. It just went on forever. And there was panic in the community and, um, with your assistance, we were able to be there to help these families. We offered preboxed food. People no longer had choice. They couldn't come into the pantry to shop for what they wanted, and that has been an issue for us. We added home deliveries. So people that cannot have transportation problems or have been exposed or are afraid to come out to the food pantry can contact JFF and they will negotiate with us or coordinate with us so that we actually have volunteers that will take the food to their homes with contactless service. We relaxed the identification requirements. We only need ID for one person in the household. We doubled the number of visits so people can come twice, twice a month. Um, we saw that, uh, employment rates have dropped significantly, even among the working poor who are mostly considered essential workers. Still about 18% of our households lost jobs and ended up in real trouble. Um, we have instituted all kinds of safety protocols, everybody's mask, social distance. We're down to a skeleton crew. We are always in search of masks and gloves and sanitizer and things like that. We can no longer accept food drives. We don't offer the meal and we don't have classes on nutrition. And because people started hoarding very early on in the pandemic, our costs increased significantly. We were competing in the marketplace to purchase food from grocery stores. And there was a real shortage of the kinds of food that we wanted to provide, uh, the basics for our families. So increased cost and incapacity issues. Um, it feels like people on the federal side don't really understand the local side, that we need refrigeration to be able to move all of the product. They are now trying to push through the system. And our food banks don't have adequate capacity and certainly the food pantries didn't. And that's why Dane County is partnering with us to help build out this thousand square feet of extra capacity of cooler space. We can go forward. Just at a glance, the numbers, um, in 2019, we broke records in terms of the amount of food we distributed. Uh, 757,000 pounds of food went out to the community. And that equals about 630,000 meals. We served 14,200 individuals. So thousands of people coming to BPNN for food assistance. Compare that to just year-to-date. In 2020, a 20% increase in the volume of food that we've distributed. Um, putting out the equivalent of 750,000 meals in just seven months. And 53% increase in the numbers of individuals being served by us. So this small all-volunteer organization, cut back to a skeleton crew, transformed the way we do business completely and, and managed to do all of that. And I'm exceedingly proud of our organization. Um, to tell you who we're serving, 42% are children, 47% Hispanic, 23% are disabled, and 22% African-American. And this is the number that bothers me the most. Prior to COVID, 65% of our households were working for wage and mostly working more than one job full-time. These folks now have 18% fewer households working for wage. They've got kids home from school that are eating them out of house and home. The school lunch programs didn't take off like they hoped, that you could go to some alternate location and pick up lunch. That didn't happen. So more and more people are looking to food pantries and other ways to get food for their families. We can go forward. It's just an ever-growing need. Um, it certainly didn't stop this year and now, as we saw with 2008, when there was the recession, the poorest of us suffer the most and they have the slowest time to recover. And that's what's going to happen here as well. Um, we went from an average of 200 households shopping each month when we moved into our facility up to 340 pre-COVID. Today, 500 households a month using BPNN. We go forward. Kitchen to Table, just briefly, because this is a great success story and kind of upbeat after the rest of it. Promega has joined Kitchen to Table. So yay, Pittsburgh and Promega. Their chefs come in daily and make to-go meals for us to distribute to the households that we serve. Epic has done an amazing job. You may have read in the newspaper how they kept their culinary staff onboard. They honored all of their purchasing from local farmers and producers. And instead of feeding it to staff that weren't on campus, they created meals for us. And we were able then to send out over 100,000 pounds of prepared food during COVID now, since March. It's kind of amazing. We can go forward. And the, the, the way that it worked in the past, for those that don't know about this, it's, um, we planned this program to be replicated throughout the nation. It reduces the waste management costs of donors. The wasted food that would have gone to a landfill is now brought to us where we repackage it. We put it in these grab-and-go meals. Um, we safety seal it. And then it's distributed with our partners, CAC and Second Harvest, to food pantries throughout Southern Wisconsin. And a good deal of it stays local. So.
Marsha, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, can we wrap it up? And I know this is all great information and the council will receive this, but can we just wrap it up in maybe two minutes and?
I think we're almost done it, right? So go forward one. I think we've got just.
That might have been it. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
So that's great. Um, but the $10,000 that you provide us annually and you have funded us for the four years of the program, it's, it's a great investment in your community. Um, we are now serving all three of your neighborhoods through HNI, whereas before we were serving the two, Belmar and, um, the west, Verona. So, uh, and and I believe that the Board of Directors will agree with me that we should continue serving all of Pittsburgh going forward.
Great. Thank you, Marsha. Again, sorry to cut you off.
You're fine. Thanks.
So if council thinks your patience, we just got another five-minute presentation and then we'll be, we'll be done. Um, so Baltazar, are you there?
I am here.
Okay, do you, are you, wanna, do you want to share your screen, Baltazar?
Why don't, we can just use whatever, what you have there. So we can.
Okay, I will, yep, I will do that. Okay, are we good to go?
Um, good to go. Uh, thanks, everybody, for, for this opportunity. Uh, thanks for partnering uh, with the Latino Academy through the work that we do with the Latinx community, not to just, uh, benefit the Latinx community, but to benefit everybody in the, in the city of Pittsburgh. Uh, my name is Baltazar Dianda and I'm the Executive Director of the Latino Academy. And many of you might already know some of the work that Latino Academy has been doing. We can put it down, uh, to talk about the mission, Wade, excellent next. So the Latino Academy's mission is to strengthen our communities through bilingual adult education, job training and employment programs. You know, again, it's providing that support to our communities so they can get education, the training to be placed in employment opportunities. Next. What do we do? Three things, uh, provide education and tools for our learners to advance in English proficiency. We know that English is very, very important for our community to advance. Support learners so that they can get their GED and advance in post-secondary education. And the most important is to provide training opportunities so our learners obtain jobs in families supporting living wages. 15 plus dollars an hour plus benefits. It is about advancing our community. Next.
Your parents are bilingual.
So I'm not gonna go through all of this. The only thing that I'm just gonna point out a number of things. Because of your investment, uh, we have been able to have the Spanish GED and pre-GED over at the Leopold Neighborhood. Uh, we have also been able to start, uh, something that is, it was brand new, which is the Bilingual Leadership Academy. And one of the programs that we are moving forward, uh, to, uh, the Pittsburgh area is the Transportation Academy, which is one of our most successful programs, is the Commercial Driver's License A and B. When someone gets a driver's license, A or B, uh, we have a number of students who normally work in McDonald's. They get this license and they can make uh, up to 25, $30 an hour. So again, it is about, uh, providing those opportunities to our community. Next. We also support, uh, our students and our residents with employment, uh, opportunities. Uh, we can go to the next one. Some of you already know the populations, already know who, who we, who we are. Uh, you know, this information might be just a little bit updated. Latinos make up 6.3% of the entire Dane County. Uh, this is where we work, Madison, San Prairie, Pittsburgh, uh, obviously. Uh, we serve approximately 800 learners annually. And, uh, one of the things that's very, very important is the commitment that the students have to be able to uh, move forward and to come to classes. And for many of our Latino Academy's learners, their biggest barrier is their current immigration status, which that shouldn't be a surprise for many of us. Next. We can, uh, you are gonna get this information, but one of the things that I just want to mention is 85% of our students lost full or part-time employment because of the pandemic. Well, one of the things that at Latino Academy, we were able to do, uh, March 14th, we closed our classes, we stopped our classes. March 31st, we went, uh, virtual with all of our classes. We wanted to make sure that our students continue learning because, you know, we know that that, we couldn't give, uh, not provide that opportunity to them. Next. And, uh, the last two minutes that I have, I'm just gonna talk about some of the programs that are directed, directly funded by, by Pittsburgh. Uh, and, and thank you for believing in this education. Thank you for, uh, sometimes, uh, as immigrants, we are not seen in some cities. So thank you very much for thinking about that bilingual education, which is very, very important. Uh, you know, we have the pre-GED, GED at Leopold School, 2017, 2020. And I know that wasn't related to the HNI, but I just wanted to put it out there to remember all the support that, that you have given us. Uh, Fisher Resident Panels, 2018, 2019, Bilingual Leadership Academy, uh, Transportation Academy 2021, and G L Skills for the Work, Workplace. Next. And this is just the Fisher Resident Panels. This is some of the folks that we brought. Uh, we worked with a total of 57 students, uh, to, you know, try to figure out what is what they were thinking about the needs in their community. And we have a total of three panels and I'm almost done. Uh, next. So I'm not gonna read all of this because it's a lot of information. The only thing that was very, very important is to make sure that our students were able to connect with elders, some elders like yourself, with Major. Uh, this is something, especially meeting, uh, the Fisher Major, they did not have that experience before. So, you know, this was a great opportunity for them to be able to express the needs. Uh, next. And, uh, we can go to the next one. Uh, one of our newest programs that you helped fund is the Bilingual Leadership Academy. One of the things that we believe in Latino Academy, in order for more people like yourself to be leading the city, we need to talk to our students about leadership opportunities. Uh, you know, we have a total of eight participants. Uh, childcare was provided. Participants learned the following topics, you know, leadership concepts, have to be a leader, resources in the city of Fisher, becoming a community leader, leadership styles, among others. Uh, they were also introduced to a number of other leaders. Uh, this is a program that because of your support, we are expanding to other areas in Dane County. And I, I don't want to pay homage to the fact that you were, you recognized that need. You recognized, many times people ask me, what do you think about Pittsburgh? I always go back to them and say, as a community. You know, those are the folks who we need to work so that they can continue becoming those leaders. Next. These are some of our community members, uh, who attended the leadership class. Uh, next. And these are just some of our students. Uh, the, I, I'm gonna finish by just saying. And these are just some of our students. Uh, the, I, I wanna finish by just saying how. Uh, the work that we do at Latino Academy is about providing skills, providing education. And now that we are bringing the CDL class over at Fitchburg and the digital literacy classes. These programs are about how much these are gonna help our community to advance. If we as community advance, if that neighborhood advance, we believe that everybody in the city will be able to advance. So thank you very much again for this opportunity. Thanks for, for the service. Thanks for believing. In bilingual education, which is very, very much needed in, in our city. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, everyone. Baltazar, Marcia, and, uh, Sandy, Robyn, and Mike. I apologize again for going long, but I think that does reflect. You know, all that's going on with the HNI, a lot, a lot to cover. Obviously, a lot of, a lot of passionate partners that wanna relay. You know, what they're doing and, and, and support the HNI. So again, thank you. Um, and certainly can take questions if, if there's interest and, and time.
Any question? I have a question for Marcia. Um, so how many people from the city of Fitchburg go to your pantry to put pantry annually?
Okay, thank you. Um, about. Yeah, prior to allowing all of Dane County to come, Fitchburg usually represented between sixty-five and seventy percent of the households. So that was around, oh, nine thousand people. Um, with the rest of Dane County in the mix, the proportion has come down to around fifty-two percent, but the numbers are up. So around, I would say eleven, twelve thousand, or, yeah, twelve thousand. And mostly people visit two and a half times. That's the average, two and a half visits. So this is not people who are coming every month. These are people who come only when they need it. So it's quite a lot of Fitchburg residents.
Any other question? Gabriela.
I don't really have a lot of time, but I was just curious if, if each of, um, Marcia, Sandy, and Baltazar could, could speak to. How the, the hub facility or the teen center facility might play into how you operate in Fitchburg differently than, than you do currently? Or how it might maybe be good for you?
I have my mic off, so I'll go first. It's beautiful. You guys, it's beautiful. Um, I think we could envision, uh, bringing a mobile pantry over there. Um, uh, we would work with Second Harvest on that. And it would depend on the neighborhood if they were interested in having a mobile pantry. But if we're serving that area anyway, uh, and we've got tons of fresh. Uh, vegetables and produce, love to get that into those hands. We also are still working with Redeemer City Church to put a pantry over on Verona West. But that hit, COVID hit just before we were ready to launch, so that's still on the drawing board.
I would say, um, that, you know, we, we, we currently have site-based mentoring programs at schools. Um, and I think, uh, you know, both locations could be places where we could have site-based mentoring programs. Um, you know, because we serve kids from six to eighteen, um, you know, so, you know, we could have. Um, you know, children from any of those ages, uh, where volunteer, we could run a, a program where volunteers would mentor. Mentor you at those specific locations.
And I think for us, you know, right now, our programming happens, you know, and so before, you know, COVID, our programming happened at Leopold School. And our CDL class is gonna happen by the Latino Chamber of Commerce. Our computer class is gonna happen by the library. So what this will give us the opportunity is to centralize all of the programming that we offer, I think, you know, and, and I did mention before. If, if our students will be able to sit in adult chairs versus sitting in little tiny chairs, you know, which, anyway. So that, that will be, that would be very amazing for, for our community in that area.
Any other question? Okay, so thank you very much for coming and for, you know, participating and collaborating with the city of Fitchburg. Uh, through the Health and Energy Initiative. Uh, thank you, um, to Robert and, uh, Jay, uh, where is the name? I don't remember.
I.
Yeah, Mike. So for the design and the hub, it looked beautiful. So we hope that we can move forward after the budget. So, um, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for the opportunity.
So next, uh, thank you, Wade.
Yeah, thank you.
So next in our agenda, we have our second topic in the Fitchburg Housing Plan Overview and Action Item Discussion. So we have Michael Cinemark, Joyce Frey, and Jason Valerius from MSA Professional Services. So, Mike, so all yours.
Is it up there? Okay. There we go. Okay. Uh, good evening and thank you for the opportunity for Joyce, Jason, and I to. Share with you Fitchburg's approach and overview for the city's housing plan. As we look to the council for guidance and direction on some of the priorities and action items. Well, Fitchburg's a relatively young city, having incorporated in nineteen eighty-three. We're challenged with some neighborhood revitalization and redevelopment issues on our northern area that developed when we were still a town. Especially with the high-density multifamily housing that is forty to fifty years old. These properties have evolved to become affordable housing by virtue of their age and also the lack of modern amenities. While these large complexes are professionally managed, we still have issues with deferred property maintenance and sometimes higher calls for public safety. We also have some smaller apartment complexes that are owned by individuals that are sometimes under-capitalized. Uh, that face even more issues with keeping up with the aging property maintenance issues on their respective properties. Since Fitchburg became a city, even though we have a really limited toolkit, uh, for housing, since we're not a CDBG entitlement community. Uh, we have made some progress by partnering with our, uh, private sector developers to meet some of the housing needs in our community. Here you can see some of the projects, uh, since nineteen eighty-three that had included, uh, senior housing with the McKee Park and Chapel Valley Apartments. Uh, we built new affordable multifamily units at Fitchburg Springs and Stonecrest Apartments. That offered modern amenities with a better ratio of bedrooms and bathrooms to meet the needs of our families with children. Uh, one single-family initiative that we did, uh, to address affordability for new single-family homes is the Renaissance on the Park Development in Belmar. Uh, where we used a CDBG land right down from Dane County. And land use flexibility with some smaller lots and, uh, street whiffs and, and some of that regulatory relief. So we were able to work with the developer to build workforce, single-family homes. And, uh, we've also partnered with Habitat for Humanity, who is currently building out the remaining single-family lots in that neighborhood. In two thousand nine, uh, Fitchburg established our housing goals with our comprehensive plan. Uh, then in two thousand fourteen, we, we've always struggled with not having resources to do some of the things we've wanted to do, even, uh, housing assessment. So what we, we creatively did was we worked with the city's planning department in turn. And they prepared the Fitchburg Housing Assessment that included an overview of the Fitchburg housing stock along with current and future policies. That affect housing affordability in the, the city. Uh, as the city was also working on its housing assessment, Dane County was analyzing, uh, the more regional housing market here. And after both assessments were completed, it was evident that there was a gap in the supply of affordable housing. Uh, in Dane County and the city of Fitchburg as a whole and throughout the, the whole region here. Then in two thousand seventeen, uh, we had a small tax increment district on North Fish hatchery road, TID number seven. And when that was ready to close, uh, we kept the district open the, an additional year per state statute, uh, the TIF state statute. To capitalize in Affordable Housing Fund. It didn't give us a lot of resources, but it at least gave us a start with a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And we were one of the, the first kind of communities in the state of Wisconsin to start to utilize, uh, this program. And then these funds were utilized in two thousand eighteen to hire a consultant to develop the Fitchburg Housing Goals Strategies Toolkit. And Implementation Plan with an emphasis on affordability. The study was spearheaded by the Fitchburg Community Economic Development Authority. Uh, CETA put together a, it was almost a fifty-two-member task force made up of residents, not-for-profit and for-profit developers. Real estate professionals, lenders, property management companies, UW professor and other real estate experts. Economic Development, Senior Center, Building Inspection and Planning Staff. To work with our consultants, MSA Professional Services and Urban Assets, who then put together the plan for us. And then that plan was completed in the fall of two thousand eighteen and was formally adopted by the council in February of two thousand nineteen. So that's kind of what brought us to this point with having the housing plan, uh, in place. And I'm gonna introduce now Jason Valerius and turn it over to him from MSA. Uh, he was our lead consultant on the project and he's gonna give us an overview of the findings and some of the strategies identified in that housing plan. Jason?
Yeah, uh, thanks, Mike. I assume I'm, people are hearing me. So just to get, to tick through some of the findings of the study and, and topics that we talked about along the way. Um, and, and Mike, Mike mentioned this earlier, the, the high concentration of attached unit or multifamily housing. Uh, at the, on the north side of the city, uh, near the Belt Line, much of which had been built before incorporation. At the time of incorporation, uh, the city was more than half, uh, that type of housing, uh, more than half rental housing. And it's, it's fluctuated since then, uh, since incorporation, the, the main focus of construction has been. On, uh, single-family detached homes and neighborhoods. Um, but still today is, is hovering around that, that fifty-fifty, uh, balance between. Attached unit and, uh, and single-family detached housing. Fitchburg also has had, uh, a relatively high number of, uh, Section Eight voucher residents. Uh, so, uh, those are vouchers that go, uh, most of them are, uh, kind of portable with, with the renter, go with the renter rather than the unit. Uh, but I think there are some of, some of each, uh, but relatively high number of those i- in the county. The, um, uh, back to kind of talking about that mix and the, the trends over time. There was a lot of multifamily being built, uh, after the recession, and that wasn't just in, in Fitchburg. That's been everywhere and we're still seeing that. Uh, and, and so I think that that. Led to questions and concerns about, you know, what is the mix? What should the mix be? Um, are we, are we making any, any inappropriate decisions in approving all of these, all of these developments? One of the things that we talked about a lot in the process was, uh, the, uh, the, the goal, the objective of. Having, of looking not just at the entire community, but at, uh, portions of geographic areas within the city, neighborhoods. And, uh, looking to see how, what kind of balance there is. And really having as an objective that there is balance among different unit types. Uh, that, that, uh, the city as a whole, but also within individual, uh, neighborhoods, there is a mix of, uh, ownership and rental. A mix of attached and detached, a mix of, uh, smaller than larger, such that, um. Uh, people of different, uh, backgrounds and, and incomes and abilities are all able to live. In various parts of the city and no one is, no, uh, no group is, is concentrated in any one part of the city. So when it comes to new neighborhoods then, uh, certainly the objective, uh, is to, to have, uh, that kind of a balance and mix. And, uh, I think TerraVest is a good example of one that, uh, has, has been achieving that and was approved with a, with a mix included. At the time of the completion of the, the study, the plan, uh, Fitchburg was the only city that, uh, Dane County Housing Authority. Uh, wasn't authorized to act in, in the, in the county. I believe, uh, that since has, has changed. Go ahead, Mike. So, um, those are some of the findings, uh, strategies identified in the plan. To, to boil it down, uh, there's a need for more housing of all types. And so we identified a, a rough amount of housing per year, um, that, of owner-occupied housing. Uh, that we would expect to see based on, uh, growth trends. Um, and, uh, pointed out that about thirty percent of that ideally, uh, should be affordable. At that eighty to a hundred percent of AMI, um, area median income, uh, threshold. So that's not. All that low in income. The hundred percent of AMI right now, I believe, for the county is a hundred and five thousand for a family of four. Uh, so we're still talking about a pretty high income, uh, but because the housing makeup of, uh, the city's. Uh, single-family housing stock is so high-valued, uh, even this is something that really needs attention to be achieved. Uh, to get, uh, owner-occupied units that are below, just below the median. So at the time, a couple of years ago, um, a year and a half ago, we were talking about that, meaning, um, home values ranging from a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred and seventeen thousand. Uh, I think those numbers are, would be higher now, but you kind of get the sense of where those are. And i- if you know anything about building homes, you know that that's a really tough price point to hit. Uh, you can't really do it unless either you have some kind of subsidy. And/or you're talking about attached unit housing, so, uh, townhomes, for example, where you're talking about less land. And, uh, and being able to, uh, get some efficiencies with, with construction. So. Um, that specifically was part of the strategy to build two hundred or more such units. Um, from when we were working on this until twenty thirty. Um, and then, uh, then also talking about rental units, uh, a, a target of roughly twenty-two hundred units. So, uh, that was one of the questions. How many more rental units do we really need? Should we, should we be approving rental units? The answer was yes. Go ahead to the next one, Mike. Um, and also to look at, uh, existing parcel, existing properties that are older and, uh. Just naturally declining because of wear and tear and age. And, uh, so Mike talked about some of those that have seen reinvestment in recent years, which is a good thing. Um, but that's a process that we'll need to continue over time. As properties age, uh, they need reinvestment. And what has happened to achieve some of that, uh, is, um, uh, funding, uh, such as the. Um, Low Income Housing Tax Credit four percent program through WIDA, uh, that, uh, both, uh, help, is. Provides the funding to improve the units and then also sets income qualified limits to ensure that that housing remains affordable. So, uh, when, when that happens, you met, you get both the improvement of the unit such they're, they're, they're back to good condition. Uh, but also, uh, avoiding the effect of pushing people out of the community because it's still income-qualified. Um, we specifically called out three or more bedrooms as a type of unit that's needed in the rental stock. And then we also talked about the need for senior housing. Uh, our estimate was six hundred and forty units by twenty thirty. Uh, this was, uh, prior to the proposal and construction of the, the facility, the, the building on, uh, Fish Hatchery. So I think you've got some of these already. And, um, uh, many of these, uh, ideally would have some kind of income-qualified. Um, a portion of them at least would be income-qualified because of the lower incomes of, um, retirees and, and, and older adults. Go ahead, Mike. So, um, and this, I don't know how far I'm going, Mike. You'll jump in when you need to, but, um. Uh, the forming of partnerships, uh, is critical to being successful in addressing, of, addressing. Housing needs, especially affordable housing needs at the local level. So I think m- most of these partnerships are, are active. Or, uh, can be activated at any time. Um, many of these are, most of these are funding partners, uh, funding sources. The, um, uh, Community Land Trust is, I think, I'm not aware that one's been started yet. It's an opportunity yet to be realized. And would involve a, a, a private entity that would be a land trust that could, that could hold the value of land. Under, under certain houses that would be constructed specifically for income-qualified, uh, ownership, uh, owners, owner-residents. Um, and then protected over time such that, uh, that, that, um. Affordability is maintained because the land trust holds the value of the land and, uh, prevents. Owners from pulling out too much equity such that it would kind of take that equity with them. The equity, uh, is intended to stay with the, stay with the property. That's one way to get into ownership housing. Um, in a way that is income-qualified and more affordable.
And Jason, we're gonna transition to Joyce now and she'll kind of talk a little bit more about those partners and then finish off the rest of the presentation. Thank you. Thank you.
So there's a couple of you that I don't know, so I'm just going to introduce myself. I'm Joyce Frye. I'm the Economic Development Specialist for the city of Pittsburgh and the city liaison to the Housing Advisory Committee. I just want to touch on a couple of the partnerships up there that are going to be key to the success of Pittsburgh's Affordable Housing Plan. We did approve the Dane County Housing Authority, so now we are not the only city in Dane County that is not part of the authorization to have them operate within our boundaries, which they bring a different type of toolkit that the city doesn't have access to, from funding to rehab. So we're really looking forward to working with that group. And one other group that I want to mention is the Madison Development Corporation. We currently have a relationship with Madison Development Corporation through their Venture Debt Program. But they are recently launching a new initiative called the Affordable Housing Fund, and that is going to be one of the options that the Housing Advisory Committee will be looking at as a funding source for the city. We put together this list of initiatives with the red marks that indicates the things that have been completed. So one of the first tasks was to put together the Housing Advisory Committee, which is nine members. We have a council member, we have four citizen members and three non-citizen members. And here's a makeup of our group. The Housing Advisory Committee is advisory to the council and also to CEDA. And what their major role will be, if the council approves the extension of TID four and TID six for an additional year, the increment captured from that extension will be put into a fund in which will utilize seventy percent of that for affordable housing. This group will be putting together the programs and priorities of where we're going to look at to utilize those funds. As you can see on this slide, the red marks indicate things that have been completed. However, when we met in June, we had a pretty lengthy discussion on how we move the initiatives that have not been done from two thousand nineteen forward. And we, after we discussed this for quite some time, the Housing Advisory Committee asked that staff comprise a memo to the council to ask for some guidance and input on how we move items from our housing plan that are directly related to policy decisions and also initiatives that involve other committees, commissions and staff time and how they play into each department's work plan. I'm going to do the next slide. So here's, I'm not going to read through all of these, but these are some of the things that we're looking at for two thousand twenty. And as I stated, some of the main goals for the committee from, from here on out until two thousand twenty-three is to start planning for that one-year extension. So we're going to be looking at different programs and ways to capitalize this fund. As you can see, the TID six extension was due to come to fruition this year. However, due to some expenditures in the TID for the Nesbit Road and McKee Road projects, it's been delayed until, what is it, twenty twenty?
Twenty-three and twenty-four.
And then, once that, that TID closes, we'll have about two-point-three million dollars to go into our Affordable Housing Fund. Want to hit next slide? And then these are the initiatives from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three. And after two thousand twenty-three, it was suggested that we revisit our housing plan to see how things are going and to revise it. And then we're also looking at the closure of TID number four, and that's about four-point-eight million dollars that we could attribute with that one-year extension. So for our next meeting, which is September fourteenth, we canceled our August CEDA meeting and we've asked our CEDA members to log on to our next Housing Advisory Committee because WIDA has just rewritten the scoring criteria for the LIHTC housing tax credits. And so we're going to have someone from WIDA come and talk about the scoring process. And then we also would like to work with staff here to come up with a plan for areas that score well for the tax credit program. And so when we get a prospect that's looking to do affordable housing, Mike and I will have a better idea of areas where we can look to direct these projects to. So, and we also encourage anyone from the council to join in that meeting. It's September fourteenth at three o'clock, or you can watch it on Fabulous Fact TV if you miss it. And then one other cool project that we've been working on is our former financial advisor, Mike Harrigan with Ellers, and another retiree, Steve Offelbacher, recently formed HNA Consulting. And they're really focused on coming up with some strategies for affordable housing. And so Mike and Steve put together a pilot program and Mike and I have supplied them with some data about Pittsburgh housing. And they're going to put together kind of a schematic of a way that we could put together a project here in Pittsburgh. So that's another exciting presentation that we'll have at that meeting. Next slide. So with, with that being said, we have some questions for the council, for your discussion. And we have actually three questions that we would like some direction. And they are, who are we trying to serve? What are we trying to accomplish? And what are our priorities? So with that being said, we thank you for letting us be here tonight and give you an overview of the housing plan and the activities of the Housing Committee and CEDA. And we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joyce. I have a question for both of you. So you sent us a CEDA memo with three items that we need, you would like to have some advice and discussion from the council. So my question to you is, how do you envision the council discussing those items, you know? Because one, you know, one is the enable ADUI, talk about the fixed, fixed parts and development process for the city. So what do you have in mind?
So I, I guess, do you want me to take this, Mike? I think one of the things that we really need is for this to be something that the council has readily available and looking at as, as we move forward. Because we have, we have a lot of things that involve other departments and their policy decisions, and we don't really have any authority to go to another department and say, hey, you guys need to investigate your zoning ordinance to allow for accessory, accessory dwelling units in traditional zoning. So what we're looking for is, is every department has a work plan with their initiatives that they're going to look at for the next year. So I guess what we need is for the council to tell us, as you look through these initiatives, what you think we can accomplish, what you think we can't, and what approach we're going to use to do that.
Okay, so, okay, thank you. Adam?
Yeah, I guess for me, you know, looking at those, obviously they're all great. I chaired the committee and, you know, like all those things. And when I look at what we're doing in the city, I see us pretty easily being able to add apartments and workforce housing and all those rental options. And so to me, I feel like finding ways to provide more homeownership opportunities that are affordable is a really big key. You know, we have the TID closing, I really like that rent-to-own program pilot that we're looking into as well. So to me, it's really, I think, looking at ways to provide ownership opportunities that are available for everyone. So I guess that's one thing I think is really important to me.
I know that we are trying to create like this affordable fund, you know, when we close the tax incremental district, but we are not going to, we are not going to be able to see any, any, you know, money until maybe two years. I think it's going to be the first, there are two-point-three million and four-point-eight million dollars that are going to be funding this, this housing fund, okay? So, and I think that in the city, you know, like, I agree with you, we want to, you know, build more this affordable housing, you know, ownership. I think, you know, my concern is, you know, we need to wait until we have the money in the fund, in the housing fund to start to have some initiative. So that one is something that we need to be realistic and say, maybe, maybe in two years, we can start developments, you know, you know, initiative where we can, the city can have a partnership relation with the developer and work on this initiative. And this is the question is, because talking to developer, most of the time they say, you know, we cannot build these houses in Pittsburgh. Your land is too expensive. We cannot build these affordable houses. So this is what I think the city had to be, you know, also proactive on how we can work together. Okay, Adam?
Yeah, I guess I would say now is the right time to develop those programs, to figure out how they work versus when we get the money.
Yeah, okay.
And get the ground running, kind of know, oh yeah, there's types of things we want to do, knowing when the money is coming, maybe even be able to look at doing, you know, purchasing land for different programs, you know, and have that set up ahead of time. So to me, now is the time to do that plan and organizing. So you know, oh, here's like three different options, whether it's land banking, whether it's buying something and asking for redevelopment proposals, that type of stuff. I think right now is the great time to do that versus waiting until the last second.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. I agree that we can plan, we can, also, I am a big proponent of land trust, you know, that we need to explore that venue too. My other question with them, because I did a lot of reading, I don't know, people, we send you a lot of material about the accessory dwelling, you know, unit. I did a lot of reading and I saw what they are doing in other municipalities around the country, and this is something that, you know, the Housing Committee wants to have our feedback. And I think this is our, you know, this is another great, great initiative, but it takes, it requires, you know, a change of zoning and it require, you know, you know, also to do a research and to determine how we can move forward with this. And my question to you, Adam, or to, because you are in the Plan Commission, or to Mike and Joe and Jason, is how we can move forward without, say, you know, we want to go ahead with the ADUI, how we can move this forward to the committees and to, you know, to council, you know?
Jason, any comment?
So, yeah, to clarify, was that specifically about ADUs?
Yeah.
Accessory dwelling units?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's one that, you know, there's not necessarily a cost associated with that process. And in some communities, I have seen that conversation go quickly and quietly, and in other places, it's a big deal. Because people get activated around, wait, my neighbor could do what? And, and they are fearful of, of, you know, what could happen. I think in, in, based on my own experience in Madison, where it is enabled through a, I believe through a conditional use permit process, the inclination of people to do it as kind of a, with existing homes, isn't all that common. There aren't all that many people that do it. But I've, I've seen a few in my neighborhood and they're generally pretty well done and they're managed through the city, through the CUP process. So obviously, there's going to be a need to look at, look at some examples, propose a policy and run it up the flagpole for consideration as an amendment to the code.
And Julia?
Yeah.
Right now, accessory dwelling units are included in our new zoning ordinance, which is smart code. So in the new neighborhoods like Uptown Pittsburgh and Terrevesse, you know, that's something that's included in the, kind of the administrative code there. It's not currently in our Euclidean zoning, the traditional zoning code there. So I think the, maybe the conversation and the challenge there is, as we develop new residential neighborhoods under Euclidean zoning, you know, and people are kind of aware of it on the front end, but how does that also then impact existing neighborhoods, you know, that, you know, long-established neighborhoods? I think that's probably where there's more maybe questions, conversations, possibly concerns.
Yeah, so that one is something that I really, I really, I am very interested and I would like to eventually move it forward, you know, I don't know, you know, to put a resolution and talk to Sonia and the Planning Department, how to do it. That is something that I would like to, maybe at least to have the, you know, move it forward so we can discuss it, you know what I mean? But I recommend you to do the reading because it's very interesting what they are doing in other municipality. So, Dorothy?
I've wanted to get ADUs into our Euclidean zoning for a long time. I see a lot of value to having that opportunity for people. One thing that I wanted to ask, or two things actually, one, is that something that needs to go into the comp plan as an update? And whether we have an opportunity, a second opportunity yet this year, or have to wait until next year for another comp plan update? And then also I wanted to find out maybe from Jason if there might be a little mini tour of ADRs that other people have done that we might be able to take a look at.
So I'll jump in on that one and say that I would imagine that wouldn't be all that hard to pull off. I would, I would start, perhaps finding staff is aware of some existing, that do exist in the, in your city, but otherwise we can talk to Madison and find, probably dig up a few that would be willing to allow them to be viewed, at least from the outside, so people can kind of see what it looks like in it, in the setting.
Or even if people wanted to take pictures or whatever and have like a virtual tour like that would be cool.
Sure, yeah, that seems like a good approach.
And Dorothy and Julia, maybe what, what we can do as, as staff, if there seems to be a collective nodding of the heads that you would like us to look into, ADUs for Euclidean zoning, maybe a next step could be where we schedule a Zoom call with internal staff, the mayor, Pat, Sonia, and then Valerie, City Attorney, and Joyce and I, and just kind of talk about what would be the approach to, to look at that and what would be the process of, and then maybe we could just
It would be great, yeah.
Hope that out for you, if that makes sense for people.
Yeah. So, Adam?
Yeah, there is, and there is ways to do something like ADUs right now. I believe it was actually in District One last year, maybe someone applied to do essentially like a mother-in-law suite. I think they wanted the husband's mom to live with them.
Oh, yeah.
And so there are ways of doing it, but I think it's probably more just making it a little bit easier to do than anything else and try to make some adjustments to the current zoning more than anything else. So there are, so I just want to make sure So there are, so I just want to make sure people know, there are ways to do it. It's, you probably gotta jump through a few more hoops than you would if we can update some of the guidelines and stuff like that. But we did do one just recently in the last year.
So, and I agree with you that, you know, having in a, you know, in the zoning, like an ordinance, and because you can, we can put some requirement, you know. I was reading that some municipality required that in order to do this, you know, it had to be, it had to be homeowner occupied. You know, you can have a rental to do that, you know what I mean? They had to be in residential areas and they are, in different municipalities have differential, different residential areas. So we need to look at that. And then what, we need to have a, you know, that Jason explained, a conditional use permit, you know what I mean? Also, you know, like you mentioned, Adam, that you did that last year, you know. So there are a lot of, the city can establish their own parameter, you know, and say, we want to have this, but this is how we want to do it, you know what I mean? So, and I think that in doing that, you can give a peace of mind to the residents, especially in the existing neighborhood, what we're trying to do, you know, because then you don't want to say, oh, they want to do what, you know what I mean? So if we have a very solid, you know, requirement and how we're gonna do it, I think we are gonna provide a peace of mind to, you know, especially to the existing neighborhood. Because with the new neighborhood, it's part of it, you know, it's part of the new zoning. So they are not gonna be, you know, they are not gonna complain as, you know, an existing neighborhood. That is something that is gonna, is something new coming to the neighborhood, you know, so. So, that, okay, so, so we can, maybe we can continue the discussion, maybe internally staff and then we can put up, you know, a resolution or determine how to do it.
So, Julia?
Yeah.
It's Joyce. Can I, can I just maybe give the council just a little my opinion and you can take it for what it's worth? But I think, I think this is a really big issue. The Affordable Housing Initiative and the plan and the implementation items. So what, what I would suggest is that everybody take a look at the initiatives and maybe bring that back at maybe in a couple of months to the committee of the whole. And have each one of you go around and say what your priorities are. And, and then answer those three questions that we presented to you. And then I think that way we can get a consensus from the council of what we should be looking at. And, and then it would also give staff time to look at the time, amount of time that they're gonna have to spend on putting some of these things together, because it doesn't just come together real simple. Especially when you're putting, you know, funding programs together. We know that just from doing the Business Boost, we put a lot of time into that and trying to get it out and approved. So that would be my suggestion that, you know, because this is, there's a lot of policy decisions in there. And there's a lot of direction to other city departments and committees that really, we don't have the authority to ask them to do, but you do.
Okay. So, George, can you send us an email with those three questions? So you can, you know, I mean, I will appreciate, so I can have it handy, okay?
What I'll do is I'll just send you the, the initiatives.
Okay.
Then that way you don't, if you didn't read the plan, you know what the, the things, the goals. And there might be things in there, park fees. Maybe there's not a desire by the council to look at those. We just need to know that and move on. So that's why I'm asking you to take a different approach to looking at and giving us some direction.
Okay.
And Mike just kicked me and wants me to shut up, so.
I do not.
So my other question to maybe the mayor and you guys too is, the other question is that you want to, you, we, you, we need to establish guidelines for council member in development process. So last night, or last, or two nights ago, I don't remember, no, last night, no, because we were counseling. I sent you an email because Joyce approached the economy director for the city of Madison, Matt. And he sent us some how the city of Madison is doing that. So my, my question to you is, Mayor and Mike and Joyce is, why don't, why don't the, our planning department come out with some guidelines and we review as a council? You know what I mean? Like, what issue we, you know, and then we, you know, we take a look and decided, you know, yes, it makes sense. No, we want to have more involvement from the alder or less involvement, or when we want the alder to be involved in the process. I don't know, what do you think?
I think that was one of the recommendations in the plan and it kind of came about because with various development projects, it seemed like sometimes they became contentious with alders of that particular district, not in support of a project that was coming forward in their district. So I think there was a discussion and maybe a thought process, again, in the Housing Task Force and putting together that plan to say, should we have the alders more involved on the front? And right now, whenever somebody approaches us about a development project, we always encourage them to reach out to the alders for that respective district. We encourage them to reach out to the mayor, you know, more informally. Sometimes they do it, sometimes they don't. We try and give good guidance and, and advice. But in the city of Madison, they actually have a more formalized kind of process and requirement. And even here, when we have the developer do their neighborhood meeting, we always, again, suggest that they do a informal neighborhood meeting prior to their submittal, actually, their formal, formal submittal of any development plans. In the city of Madison, it's, it's actually the alders that work with that development entity to host that informal neighborhood meeting. So it was a recommendation in the housing plan as a possible idea to maybe create more cohesion, I guess, as people are going through the development process. That doesn't mean that every alder in their particular district is gonna support every project coming forward. But maybe it helps to make for a more efficient and effective process and maybe manages some of the contentiousness that we've had with a few specific development projects in, in various districts.
So what I am hearing is we have a, we have an informal process in Pittsburgh. You know, we don't have it in writing, but we have like an informal, you guys, you know, I mean, so the idea is to put it in writing, that we have a system, you know, we have an informal process.
But it also, I guess the question for you as the elected officials is, is that a process then that you are, that you feel would be helpful and beneficial? And that you are willing to engage in then, because it is going to involve you and your time? So it's something that you have to kind of, if we would formalize a process like that, you know, commit to?
Well, I don't want to talk, I, I don't know, Joe, do you want to talk?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is one of the most foundational things, you know, not to get all philosophical, but of human existence, like a, a place to live. So I, I think it is important that we're engaged in this process. And I don't want to go back a little bit, but I, I, I think the biggest thing, you know, in anything that we do is we look at it with an equity lens and that we make sure that, you know, in every conversation, we're centering those among us who have the least. I live on a street that's called, that's near Equity Lane. So my, my neighborhood was built on it in the city of Pittsburgh and I'm proud to be in this community. So I, I think we should make sure that, that the work we're doing continues that spirit.
And Julia, I'll just say that part of it is really the alders to educate the public on land use and also permitted uses and, and future land uses and, and zoning. Because it's really educating the person. And I'm on the Plan Commission in my own community. And I know that one of the things that I try to do when there's a project that is controversial is to really take the time to listen to people and also make them feel like they are part of the plan and that their voice is being heard. So I guess that's what we were hearing from the development community when we went through this is they felt like they were just kind of thrown to the wolves and they didn't get a lot of support. So, and education is huge.
I would just piggyback on what Joyce was saying with the, kind of the education on the comprehensive plan and how maybe an individual, specific development project fits into that larger, bigger picture vision of the comprehensive plan. Because sometimes people may look at it as an isolated parcel, but they don't realize how it relates to the overall larger vision for the city or the neighborhood plan for that respective area. And I think if you, if you have the chance to sit down and kind of share that, you know, get the map out, show people how it fits in in a bigger picture and how it's connected and interrelated, and it's not just in isolation. I, I think that would, would help our development process there. And I think sometimes that's been, been lacking in the, the past. People just kind of look at just this parcel removed from the rest of the larger neighborhood and how it, how it actually fits into our comprehensive plan and some of the vision and, and a lot of the planning that's already been done on the front end.
Okay. Jason?
Thanks. I just wanted to reinforce the suggestions that there be a more formalized process for alders participating in neighborhood meetings around major projects. Some of what has happened in the past that we heard from developers in doing the study is that they were encouraged to do a neighborhood meeting. They did, but the alder wasn't there. And so the alder didn't hear what their constituents were, were upset about or liked. And there was a disconnect between the conversation they had with the neighborhood and then the conversation that they had at council or at Plan Commission, if that person had to be on Plan Commission, about the project. And so when there is a, a generally accepted expectation that not only is there gonna be this meeting, but the alder's gonna be there, then you've got everyone hearing the same message at the same time and the alder able to hear the reactions and decide in the process whether to, you know, get behind the neighbors, the constituents, or perhaps to engage in some, some education and, and dialogue about it. So I just want to reinforce that idea.
That made me think of something. So I, I just think about this in community engagement in general, like as I've sat on the council, that I, I hope a part of the engagement is, is not just like formalized neighborhood associations. Because oftentimes, you know, there are folks who may not feel comfortable or welcomed in those settings. Because I think you have to have a certain level of, I mean, one, you have to sort of be tied in, but you have to have some sort of level of stability in your life to, you know, be able to participate in those processes. So I'm just hoping like as we're engaging folks that we think about like, you know, going beyond our traditional means of engaging residents. So that we're casting a wider net. I mean, I've got plenty of ideas on how to do that, but I don't want to take up too much time. I just want to put that out in the, in the atmosphere.
Okay, so, so what do you think that we should, our, you know, we should, Adam, I want to ask you because what do you think that we should be doing to formalize this process, you know, to put like a one-page guideline, you know what I mean? So we should come in through, maybe the Plan Department can draft something and then we can discuss, you know what I mean? I don't know.
Uh, something like that probably works really well. I think it's also making sure that those developers are actually asking alders when they can meet.
Yeah.
Where did they do that? I think a lot of times they just say, oh, here's the neighborhood meeting.
Yeah.
Thanks, I'm not available, so.
Yeah.
They like complain about that, but they, they, they really want you there, then they should ask when you're available.
Yeah. So I think that one is a good point that you make that sometime, you know, you find out about meeting because a neighbor send you an email, you know what I mean? But I would say that it would be important that we, we as an alder participate in those meeting because I agree with Jason, sometime there is a disconnect what they enable here and the, and the alder here in separate channels. So, so I think it's, you know, this is, what, Mike?
Julia, I just wanted to add, I don't know how many of you have, have ever reviewed our Pittsburgh Development Guide that takes you through everything from architectural design review process to rezoning to conditional use permit. Maybe we could work with the Planning Department and, again, put a draft together or maybe it would
Okay.
be part of that document, because that's a document that we share, you know, with the developer that's looking
Yeah.
to do a project, you know, in Pittsburgh. And, you know, we were just on, again, today with the Myers folks as we were looking at some more, having some more conversations on their final architectural details there. And they even commented how that guide was helpful to kind of walk them through the process. So that might be a natural spot for it if we, if we develop something and kind of get your support and sign off on it.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. So, okay, so it's 9:07. So I don't know if anyone has another question? No? Okay, so, so I think that we, thank you very much, Jason, for the presentation, Joyce and Mike. So we have some homework to do. Mike has some homework to do, so he's, okay.
Julia, could I just make just a couple more comments?
Okay.
Okay, just, I'll, I'll make them real quick here, but one thing is we, we talked multiple times about Tax Increment District in Tax 4 and 6. I just want to mention to the council that there's formal action that needs to be taken in those respective years when those districts are ready to close. It involves a resolution. We can't do that now. We have to wait until that actual year. So that's always just something to keep on your radar screen, that we should always continue to remind ourselves that if, if that's our intent, that should be one of our strategies and then the timing. And obviously, staff will work with that to make sure that we get those processed in a timely manner. The other thing that Joyce mentioned is the, the WIDA, the new scoring criteria there. What we're hoping to accomplish with the Housing Advisory Committee is what the city of Madison and the city of Middleton have. And that's where they kind of look at, what is that overlying scoring criteria that the developers get points for, for the different categories? And kind of overlay that map over our land use plan, where there is land available with the proper zoning for those types of projects and to try and match up that map. So that way we can provide better direction to affordable housing developers of where is the land available that scores well, but that also has support in this community, you know, as well. Because I think, Julia, as you and I had an offline conversation, while lots 53 and 54 might be designated for higher density there, I think if we brought an affordable housing project on those lots, they'd run us all out of town.
It would be that, you know, like ideal tank houses, you know, that pilot project, it would be great. So, so, okay, so the, Mike, you have some homework. You, you are gonna talk with the mayor, Pat, Misty and the Planning Department to talk about, about ADUI, okay, and to come out with something that we can move forward.
The last one?
Your other homework is to create, kind of like, put together a guideline for, and then we can revise, you know, we can bring it to, I don't know, one of the council meeting and discuss that and, I don't know.
And the last one we didn't talk about that's in the memo is just the, the topic of fees there. But I think that's one that maybe needs to be at a, a future meeting. That could be a meeting of its, of its own.
Yeah, the other thing that I want to remind the new alders that when we approve the budget, in the budget package, the last pages, they are coming all the park fee and all the fee, permit fee and everything. So, so that one is, sometime we, I remember my first couple of year, I didn't know about that, I omitted those pages. But then when we, we approve the budget, we approve all the fee for the next year too. So if you want to, it's gonna be, for the new alders, if you take a look, when the budget, when we have the draft from the mayor budget, you can take a look at all these fee are coming there, so you have an idea how much we charge for everything. But I think I agree with Mike, the fee issue is big, is bigger than, it could take a, a whole meeting. So, but I think something that you, you revise when you're going through your budget time is where those park fee and permit fee are, you know, they are at the, at the, at the end of the package in the budget.
It, it's something that we've heard from the development community that It, it's something that we've heard from the development community that they would like us to take a look at. The Housing Advisory Committee has also asked about taking a look at that. So I think it's something that the council should have a conversation about at some point in time. And, you know, do you wanna look at, you know, any adjustments to it? Or no, you've decided that, you know, you're, you're not gonna look at that, but at some point in time.
Okay. Any other question? No? Okay, thank you very much for your participation. I think it was, uh, very informative. We learned a lot tonight, so, thank you. Um, we see you, I don't know, in two weeks, okay?
Thanks, everybody.
Do I need a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes, so.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carried, so we are adjourned at nine twelve. Thank you very much. Okay, bye.